The Committee on Transportation, Infrastructure, Lands, Border Protection, Veterans Affairs and Procurement calls this public hearing to order. It is 1:30 p.m. on Tuesday, May 12, 2015. Present with me today is, to my right, Senator Frank Uggan, and to my left, Senator Tommy Morrison. Thank you, gentlemen, for joining me. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive testimony on Bill Number 90-33 introduced by Senator T.R. Munia Barnes. It's an act to approve Track 9, Block F, Lot 14 in Barigata, with an area of 10,000 square meters relative to effectuating a land exchange between the Department of Public Health and Social Services and the Chamorro Land Trust Commission for the purposes of constructing a foster care facility pursuant to Public Law 32-226. The second bill that we will be hearing will be Bill Number 92-33 introduced by Senator Tom Ada. It's an act to amend Section 2 of Public Law 32-176 relative to the transfer of the Guam Department of Agriculture property to the Office of Veterans Affairs with respect to the boundaries of the Guam Veteran Cemetery. The third bill is Bill Number 93-33 introduced by TC Ada. It's an act to reserve in perpetuity the Crown Lands portion of Lot Apra Harbor Reservation B5. It's a return federal excess lands for the future expansion of the Guam U.S. Veterans Memorial Cemetery. And finally, Resolution Number 83-33 introduced by TC Ada to request the U.S. government to transfer Lot Apra Harbor Reservation B7 to the Government of Guam to be reserved in perpetuity for the future expansion of the Guam U.S. Veterans Memorial Cemetery and the Mossow Reservoir Conservation Area. Notice of this public hearing was provided to senators, stakeholders, and the local media on May 5th, meeting the five-day notice, and on May 8th, meeting the 48-hour notice, thus meeting the requirements of the open government law. This public hearing is also being broadcast on local television, so please speak clearly into the microphone for those who are presenting oral testimony. The committee will continue to receive written testimony until 5:00 p.m. on Tuesday, May 19. Please address the testimony to Senator Tom Ada, chairperson of the Committee on Lands. Joining us today is also Senator Tonyada. Senator, thank you for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The first bill that we're going to hear is Bill Number 90-33 introduced by Senator T.R. Munia Barnes. Although the sponsor is not here, I'm going to go ahead and conduct the hearing on this particular bill. But I want to state for the record that the provisions of Bill 90-33 was previously approved by resolution in the March-April session, just this last month, and was approved unanimously by the Guam--by the legislature. However, on advice of counsel, the Bill 90-33 was introduced in view of the fact that counsel believes that land transactions need to be basically enacted by law as opposed to a resolution. So this is really more of a formality. The legislature has already made its position known regarding this land exchange for the foster home, and so--but a public hearing is required. And so signing up to provide testimony is Mr. Michael Borja from the Department of Land Management. So, Mr. Borja, if you want to give testimony.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Senators. My apologies for my bad voice and getting over a cold. On Bill Number 90-33, we would like to commend the actions of the legislature in passing Resolution Number 2133 last month, which approved the lot identified in this bill for the transfer of land from the Chamorro Land Trust Commission to the Department of Public Health and Social Services for the foster care home. We believe that the intent of Public Law Number 32-226, which approved the transfer to occur, requested that we identify the land and it be approved by resolution, which is what Resolution Number 2133 is. Excuse me. Since we believe the passage of Resolution Number 2133 accomplished the requirements of Public Law 32-226, we yield to this committee on the deposition of this bill. But we do still highly recommend that the transfer continue to exist as we had already approved last month. Thank you.
Thank you. And of course, the committee has every intention of basically completing the requirements for this public hearing, prepare the committee report to come out for the May session, and basically, once again, affirmatively concur with the land exchange for the foster home. So, gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. And the public hearing for the Bill 90-33 is deemed having been completed. The next two bills, and I think what we can do is we can go ahead and take them all together, and one of them is Bill 92-33. This has to do with relative to the transfer of Guam Department of Agriculture property to the Office of Veterans Affairs with respect to the boundaries of the Guam Veteran Cemetery. Now, the--where's the other map? The colored map. So, the lot in question here basically is that right over there--why don't you show that? Point it out. Yeah. So, that piece there, as you can see, the--there's graves here. Can I have that pointer? So what Bill 92 does is it seeks to take this boundary and basically move it up so that the boundary for the cemetery will basically be in that area. And the problem we have right now is there are some graves on the outside of the boundary, which is in BR7, and it's outside of the boundaries of the Veteran Cemetery. Now, we're amending a law from the previous legislature because of a misorientation of the map. The proper--the corner that needed to be corrected was sighted as over here, whereas really it's here. Now, I think with that, I'm going to go ahead and I'll go ahead and call the administrator for the Veteran Cemetery and Director Borja to give your testimony on this one. So this is the piece that we're talking about here, and it's really basically to move up this boundary so that then now the new boundary for the cemetery will be here. So we'll start with Mr. Manglonia.
Good afternoon, Chairman Ada and distinguished senators. I'm here today to discuss the acquisition of the new propertyization to the Veterans and the Therapy for the expansion as we look forward to the needs in the future. At the current rate of the utilization of the grave, normally we have about 100 deaf annually, and right now, as of today, we have about 699 left on the single crib. And I think this is very fitting and very timing of the bill because we should anticipate the current rate of death in the future, that if we don't do anything right now, within 20 years, we're going to exhaust all the existing graves, because right now we have about 800 underground graves for veterans and their spouses, and we've got about 699 single grave on the single crib, which is about four-story level high. The--this hearing really is fitting because we're having problems on the southwest of the cemetery.
Okay. I think right now we're just concentrating on this piece here.
Yes. Going back to that location, it's unfortunate that we have old graves outside the cemetery, and if we acquired that piece from the--I guess from the federal, it would be more fitting to relocate our boundary and move that old grave within the--our existing cemetery boundaries. If we could acquire that from the federal, it would be advantageous to the Veteran Cemetery.
Okay. Yeah. Now, there's about 25 grave sites, I understand, that's located out here.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and we'll hear--okay. So that's just for this piece here. This Bill 92-33 only deals with this piece here and the boundary issue.
Okay. On B5--
Okay. We'll get to that when we get to that bill. So we'll go ahead and we'll hear from the director on Bill 92. B5 has to do with the other bill. Okay. Okay, Mr. Borja.
Good afternoon again, Mr. Chairman, Senators. The Department of Land Management supports the intent of Bill Number 92-33 to correctly and to properly define the transfer of property to ensure the integrity of the Guam Veteran Cemetery grounds. However, while the full benefit of this transfer does not include the Department of Land Management, the sole burden of its execution rests on it. To appropriately transfer Lot BR7, known as the Mossow Reservoir Conservation Area, into Lot B6, a total area of almost 225 square meters of land, it needs to be fully surveyed. So in other words, we have to completely survey BR7 plus B6 in order to sever out that triangle portion to include it as part of the cemetery. And due to the condition of the land and the terrain, this is an extremely labor-intensive and time-consuming task. As a result, the Department of Land Management recommends that there be an appropriation of about $30,000 to engage in professional services of a survey company to conduct the surveying duties necessary to complete the requirements of this bill. Other details of this transfer can and will be conducted in-house, such as validating property ownership and finalizing and recording all maps. Thank you for allowing me to provide testimony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Borja. Gentlemen, any questions on Bill 92-33? Senator?
Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for providing your testimony. Mr. Borja, you mentioned that you would have to survey BR7 initially and then carve out that sliver?
Correct. That's the way that the surveying folks have to do it. They have to determine the full measurements of the entire lot of BR7 plus B6 in order to be able to sever the properties out. They have to join them together as one property and then do the severing and make them two separate properties.
Wow, that's interesting, because it's just a small sliver that the Guam Veterans Affairs Office will need.
Exactly. And I felt the same way until I consulted the people who do this for a living.
And you're the expert, so I'll yield to your statement. I guess my question would be, just reading the language, it says, "The real property in the northwest corner of Lot Apra Harbor Reservation Area BR7 owned by the Guam Department of Agriculture, shared by transfer to the Office of Veterans Affairs." The previous legislation delineated or highlighted 50 feet as a requirement to be transferred. Now, the way I read this is that it would be the entire BR7 that would be transferred to Guam Veterans Affairs Office. Is that correct?
I think that the language said that it would leave it to the discretion of the chief surveyor to make that determination, because what you also have in this sliver of property is actually an easement that comes in, that road that comes in that serves BR7. And if we did sever something out over here, we would most likely, if we took away that whole sliver and allowed it to be part of the Veteran Cemetery, we would have to open up, in the best place possible, another access route that serves both BR7 and internally the B7 lot. There's another champagne glass shape lot deeper in that is currently landlocked. It's landlocked in this scenario, and it would still be landlocked. So if we're going to have to do that work, we'd have to create an opening at the same time to allow that--
I understand that. Just FYI, in terms of looking at this particular sliver property, and I'm glad the chairman is moving forward in terms of consolidating it and making sure that it's under direct ownership of the Guam Veterans Affairs Office. It's just that the need or the requirement that you just mentioned about having to open or provide an additional extra access, in my opinion, in my layperson's opinion, would not be necessary, because that's not the portion of the sliver that's necessary to incorporate all of the graves that are outside the gate. The intent was there are about seven plus graves that are outside the gate, just close to the access road, and that's the sliver, the small sliver, yes. That's a small sliver that the Guam Veterans Affairs Office is requesting, just so that they can enclose that.
Right. And it probably would include the tip of that triangle as well, that area that is part of--
Yes, yes. Yes, but if you notice that--
And we could do that. We could make it to be that way as well. But during the exercise of doing this whole process, at that point, we could probably, you know, identify a location to allow for that opening as well.
Okay.
I mean, that would be just a matter of determining, you know, as they're going through the terrain, what an access entrance could be, so we don't have to come back to this again, since we're doing the job.
Just so that at least, from my perspective and understanding, what GVAO, the Guam Veterans Affairs Office, is requesting is to ensure that we properly honor the veterans that are buried outside the gate. So they would want it to enclose that and extend the gate, the previous gate, so that it would incorporate those particular human remains, veteran remains that are in that area. So certainly, we need to try to work this, Mr. Borja, and I understand your request for $30,000, but if you have that in the land survey revolving fund, then certainly the chairman has the discretion of providing you that additional discretion in terms of utilizing those funds. But I'd like to see, in conjunction with the chairman passing this legislation, how quickly this can be accomplished, because obviously, the veterans who have been outside the gate, the confines of the gate is just uncultured. And this has been worked on previously, also by previous administrators. So I appreciate your effort and your contribution. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Senator Uggan. Senator Morrison? Senator Ada?
Nothing. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other comments, gentlemen? None? Okay. All right. So then we'll deem Bill 92-33 as having been publicly heard. We'll move on to Public Law--Bill 93-33, which is an act to reserve in perpetuity the Crown Lands portion of Lot Apra Harbor Reservation B5, which is this piece here, which was returned as federal excess lands for the future expansion of the Guam U.S. Veterans Memorial Cemetery. Again, the Veteran Cemetery is here. B5, this here is return--land that was returned. So we're going to go ahead and we'll start with the Department of Land Management Director.
Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. From the Department of Land Management position, this bill--
From the Department of Land Management position, this bill requires the Department to survey Lot B5 adjacent to the Veteran Cemetery in order to determine the Crown Land portion of the lot and to do so within 60 days. Again, due to the physical nature of the lot, the time period would be insufficient to complete the task. We also recommend that the survey project be outsourced and be included with a similar tasking in Bill Number 92, which is dealing with the land transfer in another portion. From the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission standpoint, there is a serious reservation in this bill, since it is dedicating Crown Lands for the use, which may not be appropriate or in compliance with the Land Bank Trust. In a similar legislation enacted into law, Public Law 30-158 also made a land transfer of Crown Lands, but this law was struck down by the Superior Court of Guam on August 16, 2013, in the Ganji et al. versus Government of Guam, Guam Ancestral Lands Commission case. I've included that case with my written testimony. While the Crown Lands in Lot B5 have not been formally added to the Land Bank Trust because it has not been portioned out from the lot, it has always been intended to be part of the Land Bank Trust inventory. However, since the perpetual reservation of this land is akin to taking, and since it would serve a legitimate public purpose, it meets the very first qualifying step for a transfer. Now, the second step needs to be met, which would mean the Land Bank Trust would need to be compensated. The Land Bank Trust was established by the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission to use Crown Lands to raise funds to compensate disenfranchised ancestral land owners. In the Ganji case, even though Guam Ancestral Lands Commission was a defendant and the case ruling favored both parties, the commission nevertheless was ordered to pay the plaintiff's attorneys for services. And while the decision of the fees the commission must pay is still pending, the amount the attorney is seeking well exceeds the balance of the Land Bank Trust. To the maximum extent possible, the money raised for the Land Bank Trust is intended for its beneficiaries. Legislation such as this has a great potential to add additional fuel to the fire in future litigation cases against the commission. Since the commission has a fiduciary responsibility to enhance the treasury of the Land Bank Trust, to protect the Crown Lands in its possession, and to avoid future legal challenges like the Ganji case, the Guam Ancestral Lands Commission must recommend this bill add a compensation element to the Land Bank Trust so that it meets both qualifying requirements as specified in this case. If both qualifying--if both qualifications for transfer are not specified, the commission cannot offer support for this bill and would respectfully request it not be passed. Thank you for allowing me to submit this testimony.
Now, just before we go further, can you go to the other map? So this here is B5. This is the property that has some Crown Lands. Now, as I understand it, there's some private property that's already been carved out in this corner?
There's been some. I can't tell you exactly where it is. I don't have the map present with me to identify. Then that's why this--well, if we did do the surveying in here, we would definitely be able to portion out where the Crown Lands specifically are. But the commissioners did reserve, did want to hold and reserve the use of the Crown Lands in this area to serve as the easement to allow access into these private properties, not only in here, but to go further on out into possibly even B4, should any lands be returned back in there.
Okay. So just so that for the record, then, all this entire piece here is not Crown Lands, right? There's--I believe there's some private property that's already been measured out here and also some along here. So this is really--this entire lot here is not available necessarily?
Well, that entire champagne glass shape is not totally available. Some are already private property.
Okay. So, Mr. Manglonia, do you have anything you wanted to add to that? I mean, aside from the fact that, you know, the property for the southward expansion is desired, the fact is, is that the director has indicated that there's already private properties that have been returned. The Crown Lands, the government will basically have to pay into the Land Bank to be able to acquire that for the Guam Veteran Cemetery.
Senator, my main concern on that portion of the existing property line is when there's a heavy rain, the runoff from heavy rain comes into the cemetery. Do you have that-- and I'll show you, we're having problem with the existing-- right now, some of those crips back here is a little bit bending because of the runoff of water coming from that hill to our property line. And when there's heavy rain, it runs in to behind the crib. So some of the crib are--and we have--
Can you go to the colored map, please?
Okay. So right around that area, we have the--okay. See those crips? So when the runoff of water coming from the hill, it runs back here. So it overruns to our property line. We put like a parapet or a retaining wall, but it's still overflow. So all those crib back here, it's a little bit bending backward because of the water runoff. And I was trying to get the engineer from Department of Works to see what we could mitigate on that existing crib.
Okay. All right. So that would be an issue that--that would be a separate issue that will have to be taken on, separate and apart from the acquisition of property. Okay. There's no other testimony on Bill 93-33 or any questions? None? Then we'll deem Bill 93 as having been publicly heard. The next item on the agenda is Resolution Number 83-33, and this is a resolution to request the U.S. government to transfer Lot Apra Harbor Reservation B7. Go to the colored map, please. And that's basically this area here, to be transferred to the Government of Guam, to be reserved in perpetuity for the future expansion of the cemetery, primarily this area here, and the remainder for the Mossow Conservation Area, basically this area down Mr. Borja, did you have any? None? No testimony on this one? Mr. Manglonia, do you have any comments on this?
Yes, Senator. If we could get that on the other side, north of the northeast of the cemetery boundary, we could develop that for long-term plans for--to enhance the cemetery for another 50 years, because with less than 50 years, we're going to exhaust all our existing cribs and underground. So that's a secondary move that we could do. If we get that property, we could develop that, and maybe we could put a single crib up there, because really, that's a hilly site, and we have to cut that down. As you could imagine, when you--at the end of the crib, on the east side, northeast, it's kind of hilly when you drive up the hill. But we have to cut the hill down so we could level it, and maybe we'll start another five to 1,000 crib up there. That's the main concern for the next 50 years, if we could get that property.
Okay. All right. Gentlemen, any questions?
I understand, Mr. Chairman, that you're requesting Madeline through this resolution to introduce legislation to transfer this property. Is there any way that she can effectuate it by virtue of discussing it? We're passing this resolution, but effectuating it through the government of Guam or the federal government entity? Whether it's DOD?
Well, right now, this is in the hands of the federal government, these properties here. And so we're just basically asking for--do we have a boundary on this one? Go to the other map. Go to the colored map. Yeah, so this is B7 here. So we're asking for, is that B7? Yeah. So we're asking that this property be transferred back to government of-
Right.
Government of Guam for purposes of expanding the cemetery and-
Okay, so it's, so it's federal government, not DOD or not Department of Interior or not-
No, it's federal government.
Department of Transportation. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Manglonia, I mean, I, I know, obviously, the whole intent of this is, we know there has to be an expansion of the cemetery. And earlier this year, I was approached by some veterans regarding an issues, regarding a veteran who was discharged other than honorable. And it was my understanding there was no, I'm tying this in, Mr. Chair, because it relates to burials. And I'm not sure, when, when we're planning forward, that if these issues occur down there, this is my first time experiencing something like that, and, and it's my understanding the, the veteran did not have a family member to, to address this issue. So, the veterans community pooled together to give this fellow veteran a proper burial. To what extent, I mean, I know you just got there, to what extent does this happen? And regarding the expansion or in other cemeteries or jurisdictions, do they have a way to address these types of issues?
Say again, Senator.
Do they have a process or a, is there some other way to address these types of issues? Or to what extent does the Veterans Affairs deal with these types of issues regarding veterans that are discharged other than honorable? And like in this case, there was no one to, to assist this fellow veteran in-
With a proper burial?
I was just following, the law is very specific. People that are less than honorable is not authorized to be buried there. There's a way that you could get the colored records of correction. If individual got discharged from the service, he could appeal that, through court system, because there's many circumstances that the individual become discharged other than honorable because maybe drugs or non-horseshit, but minor things that when he gets discharged, he get less than honorable, discharged. So the law is very specific. Only those people that are discharged will be buried in the cemetery. But there's a way how, how we could go about in changing the color records of correction and change this, delete it to 14. So if the individual is interested, come down to my office, I'll, I'll help him to get about, to get about, to appeal his discharge. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Senator Araya?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions on resolution 83-33, we consider that resolution as having been publicly heard. And that actually completes our agenda. And so, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this public hearing. It is now five minutes after two on, and this meeting is adjourned.